Buenos dias, bienvenidos a la Ciudad de los Ángeles. Estamos supergratulados para empezar la reunión de las de los Ángeles. Gracias señor vice porque está presente. Necesitamos 10 miembros para empezar la reunión, para completar el cua. Sí, los concejalos, los concejales, y el exorado Sanz para empezar. Gracias.
Buenos dias, bienvenidos a la Ciudad de los Ángeles. Estamos en la sala del Ayuntamiento. Y a una reunión del Ayuntamiento de Los Angeles para hoy, jueves 5 de julio de 2002. La reunión del Ayuntamiento se celebra cada martes, jueves y viernes a las 10 a.m. Las reuniones son abiertas al público. Nos invitamos a participar en las reuniones del Ayuntamiento. Se pueden ver en vivo desde la página web del Ayuntamiento o por teléfono. Por favor, llamad a la hora. Burnson, Landrick, Garsette, Grohan, Holden, Lavon, Schmascowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, really Thomas, Vice-Signum Padilla, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President. Muchas gracias. Antes de empezar con los asuntos, tenemos varias presentaciones. Mister Holden. Concejal Holden.
Señor presidente y miembros. He presentado muchas resoluciones durante mis 15 años como miembro del Consell de esta ciudad, pero debo decirles el que estamos presentando ahora, Bob Loish, me hace muy orgulloso porque él es un ser humano fantástico. Nunca deja de dar su tiempo. Y extraordinario, nunca deja de ser voluntario y dar su servicio para las personas de la Ciudad de los Ángeles. Especialmente para las personas que lo necesitan. Da mucha energía y tiempo a la comunidad a través de varias causas. Es un fundador de ayudas y contribuye anualmente a muchas causas. 15 ayudas locales, incluyendo el Instituto de Casa de Chan Guena, la Fundación de Pediatría, la Sociedad de Sintofía Muscular y el Centro Médico de Sírose. Mister Loish es el recibidor del premio Starlight Foundation de la vida. Para ayudar a la organización a llevar a cabo su misión de proporcionar entretenimiento y terapia a niños que están enfermos. Bob es un gran patrocinador del programa Dare America. Ha apoyado y ha sido instrumental en fomentar más de dos millones de dólares para este programa. Bob, quiero decirte, estamos sabiendo mucho más de ti hoy. Ha recibido muchos premios de la Casa Blanca. Con su trabajo con el trabajo de los terremotos. Mister Burnson fue aquí para preparar el programa. Apoyado por Mister Bob Loish, pero es de Lathco, creo que todos entienden eso. Y se disculpa por no estar aquí. Mister Loish, su carrera profesional dura más de 30 años en publicidad y promoción. Su compañía, LCN, es una compañía de ventas y promoción. Su lista de clientes contiene nombres y productos reconocidos por todo el mundo, incluyendo la compañía de Taco Bell, McDonald's, McDonald's Corporation, ABC, CVC, NBC. Y usted está ayudando yo también. Mister Loish tiene una gran pasión por el viaje al espacio. Se preparó para vender. Todos ustedes que han visitado el Centro de Ciencias California o conocen la pabilla de la familia de Robert. Si no hayan estado allí, sería una cosa divertida, deberían ir. Bob Loish es un hombre terrible, un hombre que nunca... Le haces una pregunta, la respuesta es sí. Si le haces una pregunta, la respuesta siempre es sí. Pide dinero, mucha dinero porque dirá sí a esto. Hoy queremos honrar a Bob por su generosidad y caridad. Este es el día de Bob Loish aquí. En la Ciudad de Los Angeles. Como les he dicho, es un nombre terrible. Bob Loish, gracias a Dios. Gracias a Dios por todo lo que ha logrado. Todos los días, cada día. Tienes a Chef Barker y otros funcionarios electos, Burnson y otros. Tienen un desayuno de oficiales elegidos. Todos hablan y dan gracias, aplauden por estar allí otra vez. Ha sido un placer estar en algunos de esos desayunos. Y sé que cuando alguien es genuino, sé que cuando alguien es genuino y lo hacen, no es lo que dicen. Y Bob Loish es un hombre que se honra hoy y respete y reverencia, si se quiere. Aquí hay otro joven, quien representa el área, Big House on the Hill, Jack Weiss. Quiero decirles unas cuantas palabras. Muchas gracias, señor Holden, quiero decirle a Cindy y a Bobby y a todos los que han trabajado con Bob durante los años. Bob ha decidido usar el tiempo que tiene. Y todos debemos considerar esto, porque tenemos un pequeño tiempo en esta tierra. Bob ha decidido devolver su tiempo a la comunidad, a los necesitados, a los menos fortunate. Y devolverle a esta ciudad. Quiero destacar algunas cosas. Número uno, el hecho de que la Fundación Starlight haya elegido a usted, este año. Para recibir este premio prestigioso. Esto dice mucho sobre lo que has hecho y el ejemplo que has hecho para tantos en esta ciudad, para tantos en la comunidad filantropica. También quiero mencionar, Mister Holden, el pabellón de la familia Loish. No es solo un pabellón, es ese hermoso área pública donde entra el Centro de Ciencias California. Un área muy importante donde tiene la entrada al museo. Tiene la entrada al IMAX, el teatro de la entrada. And you have that great sort of bi-rol walkway. And all those things hanging from the sky. I mean, it's a wonderful, wonderful place. It's a wonderful place for kids, a wonderful place for families. And that's because of Bob. And finally, we've had a debate here recently in council. There's been discussion in the Police Commission about the Dare Program. It's an example of the sort of thing that Bob has been involved in. Not for any political reason, not because he has an axe to grind ideologically, one way or another. Just because he thinks it's a good thing to put uniform cops in classrooms to get to kids. Before they make the wrong choices, to ensure that they make the right choices and they do the right thing in their life. Bob's life is about doing the right thing. He's well deserving of this and many other honors. Congratulations, Bob, you well deserve it. Bob hace lo correcto en la vida, felicitaciones, lo mereces.
And we'll present the resolution to Bob, this is Bob's day. And he has a couple of friends with him, Cindy, Alex, and Bobby. All right, very good. Stand over here, Bobby. Put you in the middle.
To all the honorable members of council that are here today and the guests that are in the gallery here. This is, um, I've received a lot of awards, a lot of honors, and a lot of thank yous. But this one, I think, is one that I will remember more than any of them. Because I didn't do anything in particular for it. I just lived my life. And, um, when I was growing up, somebody very important to me said, "The more you put out in the universe, the more you get back." And it's really true. I mean, it's one thing to write a check to a charity and get a plaque. It's another thing to do something for an organization and get a thank you. But when you can go about living your life on a day-to-day basis, like I try to do. And have an organization and a body of individuals as prestigious and influential as this organization. And group of individuals and council members are. It's really something extraordinarily special. And it just demonstrates if you get up every day and you do what you think is right and you thank God for letting you put one foot in front of another. And you surround yourself with people that care. And it's amazing what can happen. There are no accidents. So thank you very much for letting me be here today. I guess, and I want to particularly thank Nate for making this happen. This is remarkable. I mean, many of you have been friends of mine for many, many years. And hopefully, all of you will come to Thanksgiving this year. I also would be remiss, since Jack was kind enough to point it out and Nate pointed it out. That I am a member of the Board of Directors of Dare International. I know there's a lot of controversy surrounding the Dare Program in the city right now and funding the Dare Program. And I would just pose one question to all of you in this room is if you had a choice of having your children or grandchildren in a classroom. Learning about how to live their life, how to be safe, how to avoid drugs. How to avoid violence by a police officer in uniform for 45 minutes. With all the evidence of how that image and that has impacted and changed so many kids' lives. I mean, kids that go to school when they're eight, nine years old, they remember their Dare Program until they're in their 30s and 40s. And there's tons of proof to show that. I mean, when you have something like that, it's inexpensive, it's one hour of a police officer, two police officers' time. How can the city allow a program like that not to get the support that it deserves? Because by not giving that program the support, which is going to have more police officers out there arresting people who do harm to the community and other people. So with that, thank you very, very much for this opportunity. Thank you very, very much for this honor. And God bless all of you, thank you.
Before we let you go. Before we let you go, Mr. Lavon. Which is the head of the board. Members of council, Bob Loesch, thank you for your help with the Los Angeles Police Historical Society and all your years in development. I know you just spoke about Dare and your commitment there. But you've been instrumental in helping preserve that great historic station upon York Boulevard. And the history of the Los Angeles Police Department, both the good and the bad. But a lot more good than bad. But all the good that you do is really to be commended in this vice, as you mentioned, Mr. Holden. Who was the first one here today, I think, this morning. He beat me for the first time in seven months. And Jack Weiss, because you were here so. I have a special request that you come every day to council, Bob, because they will be on time. God love you, you know, and God love Nate Holden. Mr. Sign.
Dios los bendiga.
Bob, are you part of the Eagle and Badge Foundation?
Yes, actually, I am. I think I'm one of the founding chairpersons of that organization. Founding governors, yes.
Mr. Cassell mentions your name frequently. And I know that the Eagle and Badge Foundation is there to help the police officers in the city of Los Angeles. You work with Dare. You help the students. You work with Eagle and Badge, helping the police officers in the city. You're a man who has great strength, great courage, great commitment. And I want to, for my career with the LAPD. Express my appreciation to you on behalf of all the members of the LAPD for all you've done for them. It's been a tremendous effort and has not gone unrecognized. God bless you and thank you. Thank you.
Queremos las gracias, felicitaciones, y que Dios te bendiga.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias.
Next, the Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes for presentation.
Consejal Reyes para una presentación.
Good morning, Council President, council members. It's with great pride that I stand here before you.
Con gran orgullo de poner de pie aquí ante ustedes.
To introduce to you.
Para presentarles.
Two individuals who have been able to capture.
Quienes han podido capturar.
The history of our community.
Latino-Chicano community. Nuestra comunidad latina y chicana. Y han podido presentar una era que habla acerca de la lucha de la ciudad y las personas que viven en esta ciudad.
What we have here today is nothing short. But of an icon in the Latino community. The original depiction, the classic Zutzud. And you'll find a copy of this on your desk. With us today, we have the creative original image of this portrait. Ignacio Gomez. Ignacio was born and raised in East Los Angeles. He's a graduate of Roosevelt High School. A graduate of the Arts Center of College and Design in Pasadena. Ignacio has taught art in the Arts Center College of Design and Otis Parsons School of Fine Art. His work has been shown in New York, Europe, Japan, and Mexico. Many of his original paintings have become part of permanent corporate collections such as Chrysler and the Keck Foundation. He painted a poster for their series, Chicano History of the Mexican-Americans Who Were Rights Moving, which aired on PBS. But for many of us, we always remember the classic image of El Pachuco. That you see before you today. That was made famous by Edward James Olmos in the play Luis Valdez Zutz. The reason why we are recognizing Ignacio Gomez today is because this year marks the 25th anniversary. When this image was first unveiled to the public in 1978. It is part of the event being held later this evening, to which you are all invited. In which we will also be unveiling a limited edition serograph by another local artist also with us today, Richard Eduardo. But this portrait is also a lot about a larger picture. You see, it talks about a real place and time in the history, the Chicano community in the 1940s. It talks about Sleepy Lagoon, when people of brown and colored skin were targeted by servicemen. It talks about a time when it was nearly a crime to dress in this manner. And the pride that's in me today is that today we have four council persons. That represent this community. In a city where we are the majority. In a city where the majority of the children attending schools also reflect this history. And it's not until 2002, do we have the opportunity to share that with the whole population. And celebrate the riches of our diversity. Despite our color and our cultures. We are one city. But the strength of this city is built on the history of our struggles. And our young people should know. That these struggles have been going on for many decades. And Sleepy Lagoon goes back to the 1940s. When it was easy to throw people of brown skull into jail. And not have any representation, not have anyone fight for them. Except for those few activists who stood their ground. And made sure that pride and dignity in the individual was never forgotten. So today, I am very proud to introduce to you. Ignacio Gomez.
Ignacio Gomez, Ignacio.
Thank you very much, council members, Councilman Reyes. Just a few words to kind of highlight some of the importance of the play Zutzud when it first came out. It was the first Mexican-American Latino play that played at the Mark T. reform. And it became the first full-color image that was played at the Mark T. reform. And since then, all the posters have been printed in that manner. And has become the first Mexican-American Latino play to be shown on Broadway. And one of the images that Luis Valdez told me recently, because the play is coming back. I don't know when, but it is coming back. Told me that they have a picture of the image on Broadway measuring about 20-some feet. And underneath it is Luis Valdez with Cesar Chavez. And I'm hoping to get a print of that. But also, I'm very proud to be here. I'm overwhelmed, this is the first time I've ever been here. I want to remember this for the rest of my life. My wife, over there, we have four kids. Very proud that a lot of good things have happened since the play Zutz. Four kids, all college grads. I'm proud of that, I'm proud of my wife. Harvard, Northridge, UCLA, and Boulder, Colorado. And two of our kids work for, one works for the City of Los Angeles in Washington. The other one works for Congressman Baca. They're all involved in politics, one way or another. They're all involved in giving back to the community. And one of the things that we emphasized early on in exposing to them, to all sides of our environment. Was that education was the key. And I think my wife and I are proof of that. And I want to thank again the council members. I'm very proud and also Councilman Ed Reyes. Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you. I'd like to have a few words introducing Richard Eduardo. He's been known as both an artist and an advocate of the Latino community for the past 25 years. And I'm proud to say that his studios are in my district. In 1980, Richard established his fine art studio, Echua and Aslan. Today, he has published more than 450 works of art. The archives of these studios are collected by the University of Santa Barbara Department of Chicano Studies. And in acknowledgement of Richard's contribution to the advancement of printmaking. The research library at Stanford University is in the process of acquiring the RS Eduardo Archives. These archives include letters, papers, and a cross-section of 350 graphics maintaining repository of late 20th century printmaking on the West Coast. There's no question why Ignacio chose Richard to produce this 20th anniversary edition.
Richard.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank Councilman Ed Reyes and the Council, Alex. For this incredible opportunity to share, actually, rather merely, an occasion for an artist that I think. Has been an incredible advocate for the arts. And an incredible inspirational member of our community and especially for the Mexican-American community. I want to share with you what I believe is the equivalent of Norman Rockwell to our community. And that's Ignacio Gomez, who for in excess of 30 years. Was one of the most important Mexican-American artists that created the. Trailblazed for a lot of Latino artists in Los Angeles and gave us the hope and belief that we could all make it. It's my pleasure to participate in this celebration. And I look forward to meeting you all this evening. Thank you.
Quiero conocerlos a todos personalmente esta noche, gracias.
In conclusion, I want to say that I also have four children.
También tengo cuatro niños yo.
My daughter's 14, my son's 11. And they talk about the struggles of our families and our communities. I got to tell you that when you have art like this. And you have a moralization of what our struggles are about. It makes it worth it. To know that our kids have these types of events, these artists. That document our history, that enrich our generations to come. Thank you so much.
De generaciónes en el futuro, muchas gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Chair recognizes Ms. Gruel for an introduction.
Consejal Gómez para una introducción. Buenos dias. I wanted to have the opportunity to introduce representatives from Tierra del Sol who are here with me today. And I'm going to ask them to stand. Jackie Williams, Janice Walsh, Mark Silverstein, Harold Skinner, and Lynn Hilfenhouse. Those of you may know, Tierra del Sol is an extraordinary organization that serves close to 440 clients at their site in San Lantahanga. They were here today as part of the political process. They testified before the Transportation Committee meeting, Councilman Burns's committee, about a traffic light in their neighborhood. And this is an opportunity for us to say thank you to you as well for being here. We welcome you and hope that you will come back again. Hopefully, the motion is going to come forward to this council to put a stoplight there. To make sure that everyone is able to safely cross the street. At that very busy street, which I also call a freeway, Summer Boulevard. So I just wanted to acknowledge them today and thank them for being part of the political process. And those of you that are not going to Tierra del Sol. I would invite you to go visit. They have art that's for sale. And I have several pictures that they loaned to me on my wall in my council office proudly presenting. There's extraordinarily talent there. And I'm pleased that you're in my district and that I could acknowledge you today. So I'd like to give a welcome from City Hall to our clients and friends in Tierra del Sol. Thank you for coming.
Muchas gracias.
I'd also like to introduce, we have Van Gogh Elementary School from Granada Hills. Which is, I didn't go to Van Gogh, I went to Norwood Elementary School, but it was in Granada Hills. And I'd like to, we have the teachers, Mrs. Arsenal and Mrs. Slate. And they are, some of the parents are also visiting with them today. So I'd like to, on behalf of my colleague, Herr Burnson, who's not here, introduce and have you all stand and welcome the kids from Van Gogh Elementary School. And I want to say to all of you, many of the council members that you see around this horseshoe today. Were individuals who went to the Los Angeles Unified School District and schools in your community. We can all raise those of you that went to LA Unified Schools. I know Jennifer went to LA Unified. Tell them that you too someday can be standing here and be a councilperson and representing your community. So how many of you will go to Frost Junior High? One of you go to Frost? Okay, how about Kennedy? If you go to Kennedy after that, high school? Some of you, okay. Well, good. Well, I just want to say thank you to all of you for being here today. And we welcome you back again, hopefully, to the City Council Chambers. Enjoy your stay.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Any other introductions or presentations? Seeing none, then Mr. Clark, first order of business, please. Approval of the minutes, Mr. Weiss moves and Mr. Lavon seconds. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Mr. Holden moves and Ms. Gruel seconds. Before starting the regular agenda, items numbers 18 through 20, there's a request to continue those matters until Tuesday, June 11th. Yes, items 18 through 20, calling to redistricting matters shall be continued without objection to Tuesday, June 11th. Item number one, Mr. President, is a commission appointment, a adjustment for the Los Angeles Convention Exhibition Center Authority. As he comes forward, a public hearing has been held on this item in committee. I do not have a request from the public to be heard once again. Council members with questions or comments, beginning with Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to welcome you, Mr. Farrar, wish you all the best. What you're going to do, I mean, it's terrific that you're going to serve this city because I know a lot of people who have backgrounds similar to you. And I'll embarrass you a little bit by telling my colleagues that you graduated with an extraordinarily strong record. From one of the best law schools in town, let's just put it that way. And went on to clerk in the Ninth Circuit. You now have an extraordinarily difficult.
You now have an extraordinarily difficult and demanding position at a very prestigious law firm. But you're going to serve the people of this city, and you're going to do so independently. You're going to be in a position where there's an awful lot you can read about in the newspapers these days of how is this public agency spending its money? How is that public agency spending their money? And you're going to bring your tools and talents as a sophisticated lawyer to bear as a watchdog on that agency for the public. And the people should be very grateful that you're going to do that, and you are particularly well-suited and qualified to do that. So I wish you luck and congratulations, Mr. Farrar.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Have the members wishing to be heard. Seeing none, then Mr. Clerk, could you please open the roll on Mr. Farrar's confirmation? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations, you are confirmed. Thank you very much. Thank you for serving the city. Fourth with, please. And let's take the next item. Item number seven, also commission appointment, a Marvin Adams to the City Employees Retirement System Commission. Mr. Adams is available. He's coming forward now. And once again, members, in this commission nominee, public hearing has not been held in committee, but I do not have requests from the public to address the council on confirmation of this commission nominee. Members wishing to be heard, beginning with Mr. Stein. Mr. Adams.
How you doing, Councilman?
Good morning. Good morning. Do the labor groups support you?
I think they will.
You think they'll be there for support?
Oh, yes.
And you recognize the needs and concerns of retirees?
I do. Being a retiree, I certainly understand.
You look too young to be a retiree.
Well, George Carlin best described it as circling the drain. And the older you get, the faster you go. And sometimes I feel like I'm spinning out of control.
You will make an excellent appointee. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on Mr. Adams's confirmation. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations, you are confirmed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fourth with, please. And let's take the next item. Mr. President, items numbers 2 through 6 on the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held. Members, items 2 through 6 before us, members wishing to call any specials? Any specials, items 2 through 6? Mr. Weiss, the deuce to be recognized? Items 2 through 6, we're recalling specials here. If not, then Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll on items 2 through 6? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item. Item number 8 through 16 on the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have not been held. I do have cards on item 8, let's call that special. I do not have cards on the balance of those items. So we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please. Mr. President, item number 17 is a closed session item. We wish that jury made on the desk. Let's hold it on the desk. But now it's time for public comment on non-agenda items. We have item number 8. Excuse me. Item number 8 called special. Item number 8 called special to hear from members of the public. We do have one card, Ms. Sylvia Hawkins on item number 8. Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Alenny Hawkins, District Number 8. I'm here to discuss concerning the violation of the RIT program and dealing with housing of Section 8. As we know, this is a different program than Housing Authority of Section 8, which is called RIT. I am totally against it because it's really not independent. It is dealing with...I have checked it out. I went to the Housing Authority, which they instructed me that I must get off SSI. Which is RIT, which requires me to be off of SSI and off of medical assistance, which is called Medicare, medical, card. Now, the Housing Authority is definitely out of order as it was dealing with RIT. That's why they're in violation. There is not...they are not a good company to deal with. And also dealing with Housing Authority with Marjana and Kim Kane, who is my landlord.
If I can ask you to conclude, item number 8 has to deal with a specific property and the RIT program specifically.
Okay. Okay, well, dealing with the RIT program itself, again, I am not with it because of the violation and because of the way it's trying to get rid of Section 8. To be called RIT now, which is a company that is part of tax trouble, probably is not with America.
Thank you, ma'am.
And trying to take Section 8 place.
Thank you very much.
I am not with it because of how it's trying to deal with people that are disabled and people that are on Section 8 and on SSI.
Okay, thank you for the...
You cannot be a part of RIT if you are on SSI, which is trying to get you off of these things now to be looked as though independent when it's not.
Okay. Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for item number 8. Members wishing to be recognized on item number 8. Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item number 8 is approved. Next item, please. Public comment. An opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And seeing no requests, the public comment period for today's meeting is closed. Proportions shall be postponed and referred. Council members' requests for excuse from council. Councilmember Burns and request to be excused on August 2nd, 9th, 14th, September 11th, 13th, 25th, 27th, October 9th, 11th, 23rd, 25th, November 1st, 8th, 13th, 22nd, 27th, and December 11th, 13th, and 20th. All for city business and meets policy. Mr. Burns is excused. Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused on June 7th to arrive at 11:00 a.m. for city business. A motion is required. Mr. Pacheco moves. Ms. Galanter is excused. The desk is clear. Set for item number 17, which is a closed session item. Okay. In confluence with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Before clearing the chambers, Mr. Weiss? Okay, I would ask the guards to please clear the chambers. Mr. Clerk, matter before us, please.
Mr. President, item number 17, a request from a city attorney to authorize that office to expend $206,000 in settlement of case.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Mr. Hess?
I just want to be able to state what I was trying to say in closed session, and that is, I'd like to put together a motion, and that'll come in in the future. I'll be speaking to my colleague, Councilmember Perry, on how we deal with these sidewalk issues and creating these job training programs. And I already have them come back in and work in such a way where, for the past 11 months, I've been saying, why aren't we bringing in job training programs, nonprofits, expand ability to build up more sidewalks, improve more sidewalks, and get more bang for our buck, given how much money we spend in litigation, people falling, and basically suing the city? So I'll be doing that in the near future and working with my colleagues, see what we can do to create a focus on that and how the departments give us some detail as to how we can proceed with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Any other members wishing to be recognized at this time? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, next matter, please.
Mr. President, not on the agenda is Special 1, a motion brought forward by Councilmember Weiss, and the city attorney will speak to the need to make a finding.
Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has to do...this is a charter of section 245 motion to assert jurisdiction over the Board of Water and Power Commissioner's action yesterday, which approved in agreement with Lee Andrews Group to provide advertising and so forth. The council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act.
Thank you very much. Members wishing to be heard on the findings? On the findings? Mr. Weiss, Ms. Galanter? Seeing none? Please open the roll. On the findings, to have this matter considered today. Roll is open. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, five noes.
Findings are not found, so the matter's not before us today. Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the mover of the motion if he wished to submit that as a Rule 16 or...
Okay. So that motion is submitted as a Rule 16. Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, Ms. Galanter, colleagues, I would rather vote today on the question of asserting jurisdiction than putting this off for another week. Well, if we're not interested in asserting jurisdiction, let's be clear today instead of delaying that.
Got a question to Ms. Galanter?
Procedurally, we have...it's a two-step process.
Can we reconsider on the findings?
You can reconsider today once. So you could reconsider the issue, bring it back up, and vote on the findings again. But that doesn't preclude Mr. Weiss from asking that it be submitted as a Rule 16 and coming in this week.
Right. And my point is, if I'm in the position on the merits to not assert jurisdiction, I'd rather vote on that today and do that act today as opposed to postponing it for another week. I'm just saying. I mean, why postpone something that I've already...that's all.
But isn't what you're saying that Mr. Weiss would still be free in any case to bring in the same motion just designated as a Rule 16?
That's correct.
So you might as well just let it go as a Rule 16.
The other option, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Galanter, the other option would be to make the findings today and refer the matter to committee for review before coming back to the full council. That's a third option.
Wait. Let me just very clear on the options. One is...Gail, I just want to know one thing. If I vote to assert jurisdiction, excuse me, to...on the findings that it's a special that requires our attention today, okay?
Then it is before you.
Then it's before me. And the question before me is to whether or not assert jurisdiction, right?
Right.
And if I vote against asserting jurisdiction and it fails on that, is that the end of the conversation on the entire matter?
Point of order.
I'm just trying to understand the process.
Mr. Ridley Thomas, before you speak, there is a question for our city attorney.
We're looking at the rules. Normally, if it fails, then it...once it's before you, I think then it would be...wouldn't it be referred...on a Rule 23, probably not.
No, we're confusing two different things, the Rule 23 part and the asserting jurisdiction.
No, but point of order.
I'm comfortable with the Rule 23. I'm just asking a question, Mr. Ridley Thomas. And let me just remove any editorials. There's two different procedural questions. It was introduced as a Rule 23, which requires one vote. The section 245, in terms of jurisdiction, requires its own independent vote, and that's on the merits.
Well, they go together, they're part of the same thing. You make it under Rule 23 in the government code, and then the 245 is before you, and then you take the jurisdiction and you can either send it to committee or you can veto it.
Wait, Mr. Pacheco, wait. Ms. Weingart, and you may have to refer to the rulebook on this one, Gail? The specific question Mr. Pacheco has is if jurisdiction...if the findings are made and the matter is before us and there's a vote on whether or not to assert jurisdiction and assuming it fails, is that the end of it or do we still have other opportunities within the next five working days? And then, Mr. Ridley Thomas?
I think, one, it doesn't preclude someone from bringing in a Rule 16. No, because you'd have to do it within the five days. But if you brought it in as a Rule 16 and it was heard before the time period ran, he could still do that.
There can be additional attempts before the clock runs out. That's the bottom line. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, I rose to speak to a point of order. It seems to me that the rules are clear. A Rule 23 comes in as a special. Either there are the requisite votes to establish the findings, thereby giving us the opportunity to debate the merits of the issue. If those votes, 10 being the requirement, are not affirmatively cast, then the motion to hear it essentially fails, and the maker of the motion is then given an opportunity to pursue other means to get this before us. I think the body has acted, and the only thing appropriate at this point is whether or not a reconsideration of the motion on the findings is the will of the body. I've heard no such claim being made, other than the effort by Mr. Pacheco to clarify the issue. And that being the case, I would respectfully request that we move the agenda.
Mr. Weiss?
Procedural question for our city attorney. If you could just back up for a second and walk us through some timeline issues. The five-day clock starts when?
Today is...they voted yesterday. Today is the first day of the five legislative days. Assuming council meets on all their next scheduled meeting dates, the last day would be...
Today, Friday, Tuesday, Wednesday, next Friday. So that would be the final day, just so I can understand your point procedurally.
That a 245 issue could come before the council on this item.
And then, and that could come either as a Rule 23 or as a Rule 16. If the council voted on any of those days to assert jurisdiction over the matter, the matter could be referred to committee.
The council has...after the assertion of jurisdiction, the council has 21 days to act on the matter, whether they keep it in council and continue it to a date certain or whether they send it to committee. That is their choice, the council's choice.
Okay. I will tell my colleagues that my intention, at least my intention today, and I reserve the right to change this as further information develops, and I do believe that this is a matter where further information is going to develop, or is likely to develop. My intention today, as I discussed with my colleague Ms. Galanter, was to have the matter discussed in her committee so that a committee of the council would have the opportunity to look at all of the issues relevant here and then to come back to us with a recommendation, because that is the proper procedure. I do think Mr. Ridley Thomas has made a good point. I understand what my colleague, Mr. Pacheco, has said in terms of his position about making the findings and telegraphing where he would be on the ultimate issue of...but I do believe, based on what our city attorney said, this issue will be back and it's not going away.
And just to make it clear, in order for reconsideration, it has to be one of the no votes because it has to be on the prevailing side, which was to turn it down.
But the discussion has essentially been preempted by virtue of the findings not being established.
Correct. And so, since findings were not made, the matter's not before us today, and we move forward. Mr. Clerk?
That's it for the regular agenda.
Are there any announcements? Any announcements? Ms. Perry, their basketball game tonight in your district? Game one, we wish the Lakers well. Any adjourning motions? Please stand. Ms. Galanter?
Did we adjourn in honor of LAPD Captain Nick Solico's?